I chair the state's permission on LGBTQ. This is our main meeting. We have a conference call with some folks on the phone. We're going to kick it over to Erica Ricker, our fabulous vice chair, who's going to lead us in a panel. But before that, we just have a few quick announcements and a few items to address. We do have a new member who's joining us. Alan Shandonay has joined the commission. He's an employee to listen. Welcome, Alan. We'll do a more informal meet and greet after. Also announcing that this is a public meeting, and this meeting actually is being filmed by a member of the press tonight, just so folks are aware of that, as all of our meetings are public and open to the public and the press. And then several reminders to make up a busy latter half of the week weekend coming up in LGBT youth activities in here in Boston. On Thursday, we have the PFLAG Pride and Passion Gala. On Saturday, we have Youth Pride from 11:00 to 4:00, the Fall About the Back in Com. Really encourage folks to participate in any and all of these activities and hope to see you on Thursday and on Saturday and on Saturday again. So I'm going to kick it over to Erica and shut up for the next hour. Oh, but before I do that, do we have a motion to accept the minutes from our prior meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Phil Vasey, seconded by Andy Morgan. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are adopted from the main meeting. Arthur.
Yeah, one quick thing. I wanted to congratulate you and Hannah and everybody else who was responsible for the brown bag we had today in the legislature. The turnout was fantastic, the panel, the content. We made a really big impression on some folks that are fielding phone calls about a lot of our issues, and I just wanted to say thank you for a good job.
Thank you. Thanks really much to Hannah and the members of the panel for the work. More on the State House and the budget in the second half of the meeting. I just have some exciting updates. Erica?
So before we get started, I just want to check in with the folks who are on the phone. If you could just say who's on the phone so we can get it down for our records.
Coco.
Rachel.
Rachel.
Rachel. Who said that after Rachel?
Rachel.
Right inside.
Jason Wheeler.
Jason Wheeler. Erica Scapaceco.
Yes.
And Vilma.
And Vilma. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm here. Nick Teich.
And Nick Teich. Fantastic. Thank you very much, guys. So for those of you who are not members of the commission, my name is Erica Ricker. I'm one of the vice chairs of the Massachusetts Commission on LGBT Youth. I'm also a member of the Committee on Transgender Inclusion of the LGBTQ Bar, and the LGBTQ Bar also has a task force on LGBT youth in court. So this is kind of a joint presentation of thanks to the LGBTQ Bar for letting us have this space. I'm also a foster parent, and it's really exciting for me to have all these folks up here to talk about LGBT youth in the foster care system. We have quite a distinguished panel of guests who are going to be addressing this issue, which is really one of the most urgent issues affecting LGBT youth today, which is quite simply safe welcoming and affirming homes. Since the LGBT Youth Commission had our hearings in June of 2012, we've been working closely with the Department of Children and Families, which is the Child Welfare Foster Care Agency, or DCF, and the Executive Office of Health and Human Services on figuring out ways to address the issue of safe and welcoming homes for LGBT youth. And the progress that we've made has been in a variety of areas, ranging from training, access to services, to anti-discrimination policies. And one issue that keeps coming up again and again for us is the lack of knowledgeable, welcoming, and affirming foster parents. So particularly for youth who identify as gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, or are questioning their sexual or gender identity, or present in some kind of gender non-conforming way. So what we're here to talk about today is what the needs are of these youth, particularly LGBT youth, and then more importantly, or equally importantly, what we as adults that are LGBT or ally adults can really do to help make a change in the system. So who went to me today are Michelle Gordon from the statewide recruitment team for the Department of Children and Families. Next is Jeremy, who is a youth leader for AFC Leaders, which is part of the Adoption and Foster Care Mentoring Program. And down at the end is Evan Hubbard, who is program coordinator for AFC Mentoring. So we're going to get a chance to talk to all three of these folks. And our last panelist, Jody Picone, is coming from Haverhill. She's a family resource worker. So she'll be coming when she can. But we're going to be talking about two topics, the needs and experiences of LGBT youth in the foster care system, and then what we can actually do to help. So first, I'm going to turn things over to Evan to talk about why youth come into care, but specifically the needs of LGBT youth in their own care.
Great. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming out today. As someone who specializes in this, it honestly is incredibly heartwarming for me to look out and see a full room of faces of adults who really want to be true allies for LGBT youth in care. There's such a huge need up there for supportive adults and allies for these youth. I guess I just want to start off with kind of a general status of affairs with LGBT youth in care by looking over our stats. I believe I've got backgrounds and handout with these stats in case you want to use them in the future, but in general, we go over them right now. So what we know right now is that over 30% of LGBT youth reported physical violence at the hands of their family members after they came home. And of those reports, we know that 26% are forced to leave their families of origin as a direct result of conflicts with their parents regarding their sexual orientation or gender identity. Following up with that, we look at, so not only are their homes not safe, we know that schools, it's also a big issue. We know that according to the Blissin School Climate Survey in 2009, 80% of youth reported verbal harassment at school. We know there are other stats that come with that as well. And furthering up on that, we also know that when we're looking at the homeless youth population, 33% of those are youth that identify as LGV or are questioning. It's 33% of the entire homeless youth population are LGVs. And diving deeper into that, we know that what's contributing to these factors of youth being homeless are the two biggest ones are family rejection at 68% and abuse in the family at 54%. When you think about LGBT youth and how those are even higher for them. And continuing on with that, we know that even when youth are placed in care, 78% of them were moved or ran away from their foster placements as a direct result of harassment or discrimination based on the basis of their sexual orientation or gender identity. And a similar study that was done fairly recently, 2006, we knew that 56% of LGBT youth in foster care in New York City reported that they spent time living on the streets because they felt safer living on the streets than they did in their current placements. And so the underlying current that we're seeing between all of these is a general lack of acceptance, right? We're seeing time and time again, these people are being turned away, they're being told that they're not lovable, that they are not safe, that they are not welcome. And so we're seeing this time and time again, so we're looking at ways that we can be supportive adults and supportive allies, it's provide that unconditional acceptance and support. And so going on with these stats, AFC recently completed a youth-focused group on LGBT youth who are in foster care, and we found very similar results when it came to acceptance. A lot of times we were hearing from youth is that they're saying, we have heard this passive acceptance, we've heard this ambivalence, we've heard, yes, it's fine for me to have an LGBT kid in my foster home, yes, I'm okay with that. But when time and time happened, when they would go into these homes, they were greeted with a much different reaction. They were greeted with a lot of ambivalence, saying, fine, you're gay, let's never talk about that. Fine, you're gay, I'm never going to talk about this with you, I never want to talk about your partners, in fact, I'm going to tell you that it's wrong. And so we do know with all these, we're having youth go through these placements, we're hearing these things a lot. We're also hearing that they're often at times isolated. With all the moves that they're going through, a lot of times they're being taken out of their communities that they know, communities and all these friends that they know, their school communities, they're being removed in places that they know that may be places where they felt like they had support, they could be out, and now they're being moved from those. And they're being put into new environments, and they have to go through that process of wondering, am I safe? Can I tell these people? What does that look like? And we're seeing youth moved upwards of over five times every year. That's a pretty substantial risk for these youth. That all being said, and all the doom and gloom, there are some positives that are happening. DCF has made great efforts in terms of making things more open and affirming for LGBT youth, and there are other programs that are happening, like at AFC, we have a specific LGBT mentoring initiative that I'll go into a little bit later. And we are hearing from youth that while they are having these negative experiences, we're hearing more and more reports steadily coming through of supportive foster families. And so with that, I'm going to like to turn it over to Jeremy, so you share a little bit of his story and his experience and some of his recommendations.
Hello. I'm Jeremy. I am aging out of foster youth. In college now, I'm also doing a lot of volunteering and speaking out on a lot of GLTQ homelessness issues. My experience, it ranges from good and bad. Back in 2007, I was actually, and I got jumped at my foster home for being gay. It was my first year in high school. The issue was not in high school, it was at home, within the foster home, although that happened and I had to move out. It was, it was a bad thing, but because I knew my focus was school, I didn't really let it hold me down. But also, my last foster home I had was great because she was there for me, she did everything for me, she went to surgeries with me so that I feel comfortable. I needed a parent there more so than a friend, and she was that person for me. Also, even before then, I was in many foster homes, I would say in 2005 to 2006, I was in probably over 75 foster homes within those two years. So it is hard to build relationships when knowing that you're probably going to move back and forth, not really knowing who's really going to be there for you, and who says they're going to be there, who accepts you, who doesn't accept you. I know for a fact that for me, because of school and knowing how much support I have gotten through the different organizations like AFC, the Yarn Program, the Home Little Wanders, I have a life coach there that has helped me out with getting my apartment and also getting me back at school and finding other organizations that can help me out with paying for school. I've also gotten a lot of help with family support to inform some of my family about it's not a bad thing to be gay, which was through my high school, the Boston Arts Academy. I graduated from there in 2011. I'm now studying religious child education. I think some of the good, something that would be good is just having support through either a mentor, knowing that you can talk to somebody and express how you feel, because there's not many people out there that will sit down and talk with you. Although there are like therapists and psychiatrists that will sit down and talk with you, youth need somebody more than just on the, I'd say, the professional side, but more so on the personal level to be able to talk to. I've had a number of supports, Foster Center for Independent Living, MASH Rehab, AFC Once Again, the Yarn Program, Boston Glass is another big help, the Bagby is another big help for me. I feel like just having support can help build the foundation to set youth up to pursue what they want to pursue, even if it's just having a place and having a job, just having support to know that they are welcome and they are important and they are special in their own way can really help somebody get where they want to be. Like it helped me to want to go to college, want to go get my degree, want to even socialize me more because I used to be a loner because of my sexuality, because I didn't feel like I would make anybody comfortable around me because, oh, it wasn't the right thing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Thinking about the ways that Jeremy has interacted with the foster care system, I think it's a really great place to start, talking with Michelle about how it works and also about what the kids, who's coming into care and why.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Gordon. I am, you said, a team of recruiters. I am one of two recruiters that cover the state. I cover Boston and I cover the southern region of the state. I have, I'm particularly close to foster care because for seven years, when I was just a teen, I wasn't, I was a foster parent myself, and I fostered adolescent girls. That led me to adopt a child, and I ended up stopping fostering and just focusing on raising my two children. So I have both a professional experience as well as a personal one in foster care. What I want to tell you is that foster care is experiencing quite a crisis. We are, a lot of our foster parents are also aging out, and so we're not getting the same numbers filling our system as the numbers that we need. We, I was talking to someone earlier today about a grant that we are writing and trying to identify areas, and there are so many different areas in which we need foster parents, but we are identifying homes for babies, Caucasian babies, we're having difficulty placing. And when I say that to you, you can imagine that that's difficult for us, because we have lots of other ethnic and linguistic minorities that we have to place children, but we're having difficulties placing Caucasian babies, because we just, you know, our society has changed drastically. Raising children is very expensive, and we have two adults working, you know, and the first thing folks say to us is, yeah, you know, I would think about doing it, but I would need daycare. And with all of the cuts that have occurred, we can't always guarantee daycare, which is something we're working on. So what I'd like to do for you is talk about who we're looking for to foster, who we're fostering, and the process. So children come into foster care as a result of abuse or neglect, and when that occurs, the department intervenes on their behalf by filing a CME petition. Children also come into care through a process called, formally called CHINS, and I believe it's Child Requiring Assistance, it's newly named for a new bill. We're still calling it CHINS for now. It's Child in Need of Services, and that's how we get a lot of youth coming in, and I suspect a lot of gay and lesbian kids, transgender kids are coming in through CHINS petition because they're facing crisis at home and coming out. So that's how they come into care. When children come into foster care, our very first obligation and goal is to try to resolve the issue that brought them to foster care so that they can return home. We work on that process for 12 to 18 months strictly, with no other goal that is our main goal. So people often say to me, how long will I have to foster a child? And I say, anywhere from three months to 18 months. I can never answer that question, it depends on the particular case. Who we're seeing in foster care? We have older children and teenagers, we have children with special needs. Those special needs can include developmental education or emotional delays. We have children who are medically involved, drug-affected babies, sibling groups. Sibling groups make us anxious, because there's no reason why, we never want to split them up, and it's rare when we can keep them together. You know, a sibling group of five is a big deal in the area office. And then, as I mentioned before, we have linguistic and ethnic minorities, and we're always recruiting and trying to place them in a home that can support their linguistic and ethnic identity. So people will ask, you know, how is the process? What are the requirements? And there are a lot of myths out there. People think, oh, I can't be a foster parent because I rent, or I can't be a foster parent because, you know, I don't make enough, or whatever that may mean. We have standards, you know, so we're always, you do need to make enough money to support yourself. The foster care system is not designed to support the child. You know, we give a stipend for, and a stipend suggests that it doesn't cover everything. So we are looking for folks who don't need additional services except for the ones that we use to support the child. So you can, you need to have an income, you can be single, you can be divorced, we really don't really get caught up in those kinds of issues. We look, people will say, how many children can I have? You can have up to six children in your home, but you can only have a maximum of four foster children if you have the room to accommodate those children. People often ask, because bringing a foster child into your home, we ask you to make that child a part of your family. And so they'll say, can I choose the sex of the child that comes into my home? You absolutely can. In fact, we want you to be thinking about it that way. We don't want to just, you know, our need is great, I always tell folks, until we will call, we do license you for a particular thing, but if we know your circumstance, we know you have extra space, and, you know, maybe you can accommodate three and you have two, we may ask you. So I always, to take an additional child, but I always ask, tell folks, you need to know your own ability, and you can say no to DCF. No, I have enough, I'm, you know, really set with two. So people are allowed to make those kinds of decisions for themselves around what their family and makeup will be. We provide MASH health and a stipend for children who are placed in their home. So the, again, I say, it is a stipend. It is, we pay a daily rate, it is not a salary, it is to cover the cost, it is not to cover the cost, it is to offset the cost of raising a child, because it is, people always say, you'll hear people, fostering for the money, that's really impossible. No one in their right mind would foster for the money. It's not that much money, and parenting is such a big job. You have to really want to do this. You have to want to help children through these, the transitions that children go through. I recruit for all of the children that come into care, so the only standard that we have to recruit families for is that they can help children through changes. It has to be that broad. We provide training, and we're looking for whatever comes up. If a child comes out in your home, can you handle it? If a child develops, you know, a learning disability, not develops it, but it comes to, we become aware of it, can you handle it? So it's not, we don't know what will occur during a placement. You know, there are some times we know that this child is gay or lesbian and is 16 and has had a horrible experience, and we are looking for a gay or lesbian home as a mentor, some sort of safe landing place. But often, we don't know, and that child hasn't come out to us. So we're just looking for parents who can support whatever transition children are going through. I just wanted, I'm going to leave some of the rest for open questions, and I just wanted to, I don't know if anybody had a chance to pick this up, and I'm going to go through this quickly. Okay. So our process is really, it's sort of simple, but it takes a while. So people call in with an inquiry to the department, we send them out an application, they return that application to us, that is when the process really starts. We use that application to do a background record check. Once, if there are, there are some things we can waive, and there are some things that won't be waived. Once that's completed, we invite them to our training course. Our training course is 10 weeks long. Sometimes, depending on where in the state you are, it can be done on the weekends, but generally, it's done in the evening, three hours at a time. Once that's completed, at close to the end of the training, we start to visit you and do our home study. It's very intrusive. We ask all kinds of questions. It's very intrusive, and really get a sense of who you are, and challenge even your ideas of who you believe you can foster or adopt, and really sort of push you to get a good sense of where you are and if we believe that's where, that you're in the right place and our expectations align. After that, for foster care, you're available for placement. If you were adopting, you would become one of our waiting families, and we would possibly talk to you about children and do a disclosure, a disclosure if a placement is made for you.
So I went through this exact process. We call, my wife and I called, it was kind of like calling our own bluff a little bit. We called and we would say, you know, oh, we can just call and ask about it, it doesn't mean we have to fill out the application. We got an application, like, oh, we'll just fill it out, it doesn't mean we're actually like agreeing on anything. So we filled out the application, which is very lengthy, and you talk a lot about how you handle conflict, and how your parents handle conflict. And we turned it in, and then a class came available, and we were like, oh, that sounds so interesting, we'll go spy on the other people that are interested in doing this. That doesn't mean that we're signing up to be foster parents. And we went, and I was really surprised by the fact that, at least in my training, an entire day was devoted to working with LGBT youth, which is something the parenting class is, has really changed for foster and pre-adoptive homes. There's been a really strong component added to talking about LGBT cultural competency issues, which was a lot of fun. Being the only queer people in the room was really interesting to hear people talk and talk out issues for the first time and end up being really supportive, I think. And so then we finished the class, and no one, our family resource worker came to meet with us and do our home study, make sure we had a sink, that sort of thing, and talked more about conflict, and really didn't talk at all about our identity, but that was kind of given, but talked much more about how we would handle youth. And then we didn't get a call for a long time, so everything was fine. And then, lo and behold, one day, if we did get a call, 1:00 in the afternoon, of asking if we could have a child come stay with us at 5:00 PM that day. So this is where the support for the foster parent is really crucial, and for us, we have, the family resource worker is the person who works with either the foster parent or the kinship placement. So I'm going to turn things over to Jody, who's here from Haverhill. She's one of the GLT liaisons that we, as a youth commission, work with on a regular basis with the DCF liaisons, and is also a family resource worker. Could you tell us a little bit, also go?
Sure, sure. Very sorry that I'm late. So I work specifically kinship within the Family Resource Unit. So the good news, compared to what Michelle was saying, if you actually knew a family member, knew a youth through a friend, your church, your organization that you may belong to, whatever in the community in the world is that you may play, and you know of a youth that's coming into care, you can apply for kinship to care, which is basically everything under the foster slash adoption requirements, but it does not require you to do the 12-week training. Because you may quote-unquote "have a relationship" with this youth or this child, we do not require the 12-week training. So it's the same vetting process in regards to filling out an application, having a background check, is there any DCF history? If there is, we actually waive certain things. Trust me, the department has really changed dramatically. In the past, if any of those issues came up for background or DCF history, we kind of disqualified you immediately, we realized that was not appropriate. Kinship is really where the department has moved. Our numbers have increased exponentially in the last two and three years. So know that it's not just the foster care or adoption room, but if you actually know of a child or a youth through your family, or your friends, or your community, you could come forward to us and say, please vet our home and let this child come into my home. And we would go through a very similar process, and you would not need to do the 12-week training. If you wanted to, when one came available, we would love that you do the 12-week training. So as a liaison in the Haverhill office, the state really is trying to have a minimum of two liaisons within every office. Unfortunately, we do have a few offices that do not have liaisons at this time, but we are working on it. So the state and the department is really moving in a direction to understand these issues and be much more sensitive and educate ourselves as well as our community of people. So what we do now is, we now are introducing part of LGBT training in our core, an initial training for all of our social workers. So as of right now, every single social worker that starts working for the state of Massachusetts has training in LGBT issues. Our MAP training, that is part of the 12-week training for foster and adopting applicants, which MAP, you hear all these acronyms, so I don't know if people understand what MAP really, does anybody know what MAP means? It's Massachusetts Approach to Partnership in Parenting. And in that 12-week course, it does include an element of LGBTQ training as well. Another thing that the liaisons are working on, we've kind of got a grant right now. we've kind of got a grant right now around permanency. We are really kind of making a mad dash to get some work done because the grant will expire. So we've got an opportunity right now, but we've spolched a couple of things. And what we're working on right now, as the group of liaison statewide, is putting together some leaflets and some educational information that are available for our social workers and even our collaterals that we can hand an informational sheet about LGBTQ youth, how to work with them, resources and additional information for the youth themselves, for either the family that is raising or is guardianship or parenting the youth, for the foster home that may have the youth, for a kinship that may have the youth or people that are working with that child or that adolescent. And another piece that we're working on, we're also having a huge change with our assessment process. And our assessments are now going to include a piece in the assessment in regards to LGBTQ families, youths, parents, guardians, whoever is involved on the case. So the state really is trying to embrace the fact that we have not done a great job. We want to do a better job. And we really are taking a lot of steps in a very short period of time to acknowledge that this is something that has to be done and get everybody in the state really up to speed. So that's kind of some of the work that we're doing as the liaisons and we're making a mad dash for it.
That's great. I appreciate it. So, so there's the foster care, pre-adoptive care and kinship within foster and pre-adoptive care. But that, those are all kind of serious commitments. So I wanted to have Evan share a little bit about a different level of commitment where the child may not be living in your home, but you're still contributing to a positive experience for that child.
So imagine after hearing all these stats and hearing all of these stories, a lot of people here are probably feeling, you know, inspired at least to make some kind of difference or do some kind of touch point with this youth. And maybe you're thinking about fostering or adopting, please. Maybe eventually, maybe not right now. Or maybe you're at a point where you don't want to be a parent, whether it's foster parent or adoptive parent or not, but you still want to be involved with this youth. There is a way and that's through mentoring. And so I want to get a quick show of hands in the room since I know it's late and it's Wednesday, people might be fitting a little bit. How many people here have had a mentor in their life? Whether formal or informal? So most people. What we know is that mentors make a phenomenal difference and that at AFC, we believe every single person in this world deserves at least one mentor, regardless of your experience, regardless of your identity, regardless of your race. It doesn't matter. You deserve a mentor because they make a huge difference. And so what our mentors do?
We've got a hand raised on the phone as well.
Yes, love it. So what we do for our mentors is that our mentors at AFC commit to meeting with their mentees for eight hours a month, usually twice a month for four hours each. We include transportation time in that. So if a mentee does get moved to someplace like Fall River, we count that in to your times, so don't worry about that. But what they do are just fun things. You are there to be a cheerleader. You're there to be their friend. Our mentors are volunteers, so you are one of the few, if not the only person in our life that is not paid to be there, that is not paid to care about them. And when they are being challenging or exhibiting hard behaviors, you're coming back because you care and that means the world to our youth. That you are probably the only person that is doing that. And even though they know from AFC that we care, they know that we're theoretically still paid to do that. So our mentors are one of those few people that can do that. But it's not all hard. What you guys get to do with them is go for walks. You get to go bowling. You get to go kayaking. Do whatever it is that interests your mentee. If they want to learn a new skill, you get to do that with them. You can cook with them. But also, we train you for eight hours. You go through a pretty rigorous training process with that. I'm gonna put that out there. It's worth it. But through that eight-hour training, we will talk to you about everything you are going to need to know, a crash course in mentor. So that's knowing how to talk about fashion and to deal with the fact that you realize you are as hip as you used to think you are, because that's happened with me where I constantly hear now that Justin Bieber is not hip and it's now apparently One Direction. I don't, I don't, I just go with what y'all tell me. All right, so at that, we train you. We also train you in more serious things. We talk about how to be trauma-informed. We talk about how to talk about things like sexual identity, gender identity, healthy relationships, healthy eating. We give you that crash course in that. And then on top of that, you get stellar master's-level licensed support throughout the entire part of your, your relationship with them. At AFC also, it doesn't just do this mentoring. We do through a program called AFC Leaders, which Jeremy has spoken to as part of. Our AFC Leaders program is for youth that are 16 older and are preparing to age out of foster care and we focus on providing those essential life skills. So things like learning how to open up a bank account, getting your driver's license, how to find your first apartment. We focus on all those skills that a lot of us have taken for granted that we had given to us, that a lot of our youth don't have. So our AFC leaders focused on that. Also, again, it's about leadership, so opportunities like coming here and speaking on behalf of other youth and also doing really awesome group events like kayaking. We do a lot of awesome things like that. So mentors are volunteers, so that way you can also be a life coach and help prepare them for that. And through AFC, we've been around for about 11 years now, but a couple of years back, we were looking at these rates and we realized that LGBT youth in care were at a much higher disproportionate rate in care and that there were a lot of needs that are out there. And when we're looking at these stats, and again, we saw that it's a lack of acceptance and it's isolation. And mentors can play a huge role in that. So last year, 2012, we actually went through the process of launching our LGBT mentoring initiative. And what we're doing is we're focusing on specifically youth who identify as LGBT in care, who are specifically enrolling themselves in our program. And we have mentors who have specifically applied to be mentors that are LGBT. So we're matching LGBT adults with LGBT youth in care. And the focus is not all about being LGBT, but it's about that youth knowing that they have someone that they can have as a role model, someone they can connect with and someone they know above all things is going to be a safe space for them, where they can talk about those things. Like, I want to learn how to play the guitar, but they ask to talk about, I think I might be gay. What does that mean? Or I can talk about my boyfriend. I can talk about my crushes and not worry about what your response is going to be. And if you all are interested in becoming a mentor with us or becoming a life coach, I would definitely encourage you to come and talk to me afterwards. I will say right now, we're at a really unique place for AFC. Our caseloads are actually maxed out at this point. So we are kind of limiting our amounts to make new matches, but don't let that discourage you. If you're interested in volunteering with us, there are a lot of ways to do that and we're always looking for mentors. So definitely feel free to ask me afterwards. I'd be happy to give you information. And there's of course more information out back on AFC if you're interested.
So we wanted to leave some time for people's questions, either, you know, about the policy or more structural systemic stuff that DCF is doing, but also the really personal specific type of stuff. So I wanted to see if folks have questions. Stuart?
I believe, Michelle, you said that some of the foster parents were aging out of the system. And I don't know if you meant that informally or formally and if there was an upper limit?
No.
So I'm sorry, just for the phone folks, is there a question about whether there is an upper limit for age for foster parents?
No, there isn't. They're like, we are retiring. We've had, you know, done all of that we can and they're making decisions for themselves.
But the, the number of foster parents who are entering is smaller than the number that was leaving, is that?
Well, it's not that. We're just, we're not sort of getting as many to match the amount of children. We're always in deficit mode.
What was the question? Way in the back. The question was, are you allowed to be a foster parent if you're trans?
Well, we're not considering your, your sexual orientation as a part of qualifications.
Or your gender identity.
Or your gender identity.
Jody, you're looking at the desk.
Yeah, I mean, we're not disqualifying anyone. It's really about your fitness in regards to criminal background, DCF background. If you are able, willing and have the means, you know, and have a functioning environment to support a child, absolutely, we need as many as we can get. One of the things that's happening, whether we have a deficit of foster parents, if one office has a deficit, we're borrowing from another office, which means that child may be leaving their school district, their community, the collaterals of therapeutic services that they have. So this becomes even more of a systemic issue for the youth because now the trauma of leaving their home is expanded and, you know, it's, it's just amplified by having to change everything else in their life as well, especially school. You're talking about children that are potentially coming from a trauma history and a very extremely difficult household environment. And school has probably been their primary outlet and safe zone. And if we have to change that school and that social environment, we're creating even more trauma for that child.
So there's a lot of things that are considered, but gender identity is not one of the things that's considered?
Two questions. You mentioned an LGBTQ resource list for social workers. Is that publicly available?
So one of the things that the liaisons are working on is actually doing like a geo-mapping so that there is part of the state website that all social workers are able to go to. And we're in the process of creating that right now. We've also had a commissioner change, so that's, you know, a difficult process right there. But we, we will keep pushing forward with this. I've got resources that I'm bringing for Erica because part of what her group is working on is also collecting those resources. So we've, we've got a few groups within the state, not just DCF, that is really pushing forward in every avenue professionally that is dealing with families and children, so that we are creating this stuff. Whatever does not exist now, we are in the process of creating it.
And one of those items is, I think, what Jody had referred to earlier is one of, is one of these handouts. And one, and there's, you know, a simple two-page handout of resources that is in the process of being created. So I think that there's certainly a room for input at this moment.
Okay. And you had mentioned that every social worker that's starting with DCF has LGBTQ training. What about existing social workers?
So we're working on that piece. When you talk about going into an existing office, and me is the person that already works in that office, staff is not always receptive to, oh, Jody's going to give us a spiel today. So we want to make sure that we're delivering the best training that we can for the existing social workers. We're trying to figure out what is the best avenue to do that. One of the things that I just did in Haverhill, there's a theatrical group called True Colors. I just had the theatrical group in Haverhill and the impact was so much more efficient than any trainer or myself going in front of the staff and trying to train LGBTQ issues. It was moving. It provoked questions at the end. People were engaged. It was a perfect experience. My goal is to try to get True Colors to perform in every region and every office. The kids were dynamite. If you haven't seen the performance, go see it. So we're working on it.
Sean, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
I, I came on late because I have another event, but if you already addressed, please excuse me, but did you have any data collection at all?
No, we haven't. That's a, that's a good question.
Just like, are there any efforts underway to gather data on LGBT youth in foster care? And cognizant of the fact that, you know, sexual and gender identity is, is part of the, you know, how it develops in foster, so a lot of people don't know yet if they're LGBT, but given that, is there any data that's going on or are you titling any, you know, questions or anything like that?
There is data that already exists out there. There's a Seattle-based organization. If you looked up on YouTube, Families Like Ours, there is a video, on average, I think that nationally, the estimate is approximately 5% of youth coming into foster care is either identifying or will be identi-, you know, comes out in the process of foster care or, you know, coming into state care in custody. But on average, 5%, but, you know, each state is varying and those numbers are different state to state. But you can actually look on the website. There are some numbers that are out nationally and this is definitely a problem for child welfare agencies throughout the United States.
But what about the opportunities that youth like data within the system? Is there an opportunity?
I am not sure about that. I can ask that question at our next statewide meeting on the 14th of June. So I don't want to answer incorrectly because I'm not sure.
Okay. I'd love to know though, do you think? I think it's important to try to do it if we're not doing it already.
Right.
I, I think one of the interesting things at a recent statewide meeting of the GLBTQ liaisons for DCF was that former Commissioner Angelo McLean said, let's just assume 20%. And if we're assuming that a fifth of the youth that we're working with identifies LGBT, that's a really important number, a really high number that we need to actually be addressing their issues. And I think we just stick with 20%. I think that's pretty solid for accessing services and that sort of thing. So that's, that's what I'm, I'm in favor of. Carly in the back.
I just want to jump on, jump behind what Sean said. I think that's all.
Yeah.
So Jody, you talked about doing assessments, or the assessments will now include a piece on LGBT. What, can you talk a little bit more about that? And can that be used as, you know, collecting, as a way to collect data?
So just for folks on the phone, Carly is asking if, what the assessments are included and if assessments include LGBT issues.
So from Central's perspective, that could be exactly why this is happening. I'm not sure about that. The assessment process, when a case is first initially opened with the department, there are a couple of different ways that that can happen. But when a case comes to a point where we do what's called a comprehensive assessment, we're gathering information from the parents, every household member of the child, historic information, their own past trauma and parenting styles, really a full factual history, chronological type of assessment and report that's completed. The change that's undergoing right now is to come from much more of a strength-based and a protective capacity of the parent or guardian that's caring for the children in the home, opposed to just kind of fact-finding. We really are much more interested in what are these people's strengths? What are the parenting mechanisms that are working for this family right now? Opposed to coming from a more like deficit perspective. So that assessment, that comprehensive assessment is going to start including, the social worker really needs to be asking how the parent or how each household member identifies and what orientation. So that while we are putting data into our computer system in our iFamily Net system, that, that data can be retrieved later on. So I, I don't know who is currently working on potentially collecting that data or extracting that from our system, but I do know that that's part of the goal, is to really understand the population that we're working with.
Particularly, I think, coming from a, a family acceptance perspective. If family acceptance of coming out or identifying of a gender identity question or gender presentation, I think that those are things that aren't being captured, that could be, that could be captured. I think Kathy got a question.
As a, I'm really happy to hear that Jeremy's in college. And my experience as a pediatrician has been that young people who are pretty stable in high school in a foster family and elect to stay voluntarily involved in DCF have a very different outcome and a more successful outcome than those who age out and are essentially on their own at 18. And I'm wondering what happens to the foster parent relationship if a child remains voluntarily involved in the system? Is there an official role or an unofficial role?
We're talking about the difference between aging out versus voluntarily staying in a relationship?
And also whether there's a perception whether LGBTQ youth are more or less likely to keep that voluntary involvement?
Do you want to speak about that a little bit?
From my experience, I still keep in contact with my foster mom. She still calls me up, asks me, how is my apartment doing? How's school doing? She, she even is trying to set up a time where she can come see me and also go for some of the stuff that she hasn't been caught up on. I, I feel like it all depends on your experience with your social worker and the department itself to want to stay within the department. I know for a fact because I, although I have my bad experiences, they weren't, they weren't something that was going to hold me back from trying to be better than where I was before. I feel like that me coming out within the system also helped me to see that I can help other people. So just me wanting to do something for myself and for others, kind of asking for the support and knowing that there are supports out there, just pushing for it, I was willing to work with them and do what was needed to be done. And then later on, like I'm, actually in the next month or so, I should be finally aged out and on my own. And I feel like they have set me up with a good support and set me up to know what I need to do living on my own and being independent.
So can I just speak a little bit about part of what you're asking? Because a lot of people are very confused about this. And I also come from doing adolescent work for 13 years with the department. Children do not have to age out at the age of 18. They have the capability of staying with the department until they actually turn 23 years old. So what that looks like for the department is you can remain in the foster home that you're is you can remain in the foster home that you're in. You would become your own vendor. So instead of the foster parent getting their actual payments as a foster parent, we actually pay the stipend to the student. And whatever the student and the foster parent work out as far as rent or expenses, we allow them to do that. They actually become a household member at that point, opposed to a foster child. So as long as the house is not at its full capacity with how many children or household members there are in the space, it's always doable. We encourage that foster parents stay in touch with the children that have come in their care. These are relationships that may be the best relationships that they've had in their lifetime. We do not want to sever those ties. It's about permanency. Some foster parents choose not to. So we encourage it and we definitely support families that want to do that. The more permanency and the more support that we can build around a student, whether they choose at 18, I no longer want ties with the department, or they're going to continue with having the department's support, we need to build as much strength and support and permanency for that adolescent as possible. And if the primary relationship is with the foster parent or with kinship, we need to continue on that path.
Personally, because I was a foster parent so long, I still have relationships with the grown women there. Like, you know, many of them are 27 and 30 because this was quite some time ago, and they have children. And we still have relationships and, you know, they're my Facebook friends.
I'll give you, I'll give you a perfect example. In doing adolescent work for 13 years, I have probably about six females that I am still in contact with. Four of them have children of their own. We just got together about a month and a half ago where all four girls and two of their children, we went out to breakfast. I'll never do that again because it was just way too much for the kids. I think, and the moms. But, you know, even in a master's program, I don't think that folks understand how long sometimes social workers are involved in a case or in a child's life. We're talking about children that are now 24 to 26 years old. I've been there since they were eight and 12. So it's not like you just terminate that relationship. Am I in contact with them every day? No, but I do want to hear from them. I do want to know if they need something, if they can't find a resource, if they're in need for something in the community. They call.
Jeremy, did you, or Jeremy, you was telling me earlier that you've had the same worker since?
Yeah, since I was five. I haven't switched not once, and she's always been there. And even to this day, she even called me like two days ago, asking me, how's everything going? She even came to visit my apartment and to see what other organizations I'm working with to help out along with. I was also working on the Youth Advisory Board to help out with the different conflicts within and also for myself, just so I can have things to do knowing that I want to help people.
Arthur?
In the MAP training, I wondered, do you ever have folks who have fostered LGBT kids come in and speak to others about their experience? Because I'm thinking about how effective that is in PFLAG, where parents can reassure one another and so forth. Because you may have a prospective foster parent who's afraid of doing something wrong with an LGBT kid. And if they could hear from another who has done, has a successful story to tell and assure them that they can handle it and so forth. You don't have to be LGBT to foster an LGBT child.
The question is whether there's room for veteran foster parents with LGBT kids coming to MAP training?
What we try to do on the ninth week of MAP training is our panel night. And what we try to do, sometimes we don't have those resources, but what we try to do is have the panel meet the needs of the group. And so if we see that someone may be struggling with that, with that issue, not sort of knowing what to say or feeling they can do it, if we had the resource, we would certainly include them for panel night. But again, having the resource when you need it can sometimes be difficult.
But can I selfishly steal that? Because I actually love your idea. I think actually having PFLAG, I think whether or not they have done foster care, I think that actually having somebody from the organization come in would be a phenomenal benefit to our panel nights. And we are not doing that currently. So I am going to selfishly steal that from you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Allison or somebody in the back, there's somebody in the back who had a question.
Yes, I was going to ask, in order to stay in the system until the age 23, do you have to be a student?
The question was, do you have to be a student to stay in foster care until 23?
So yes, you actually do. The voluntary requirement beyond the age of 18 is that a minimum of part-time school and a minimum of part-time job. Now, there's a lot of leeway with that, depending upon where the adolescent is at therapeutically. But they are actually kind of signing a contract with the department. They can abandon that agreement at any time, and the department can abandon that agreement with at least like a 30 to 90-day notice to the youth. You know, criminal activity is something that will disqualify you. But there is no specific, it does not have to be a formal college. If it is a certification program, if it is a trade, we are at least, even some of our youth at 18 don't have their diploma or GED if they're involved in a GED program. So it does not have to look like a traditional college path. But we do want our youth to be pursuing something educationally and at least minimally. And if they can't find employment, we're willing to work with that and we'll say, okay, so there are some volunteer positions that are available so that the youth is doing something productive and moving forward in their life, opposed to staying stagnant or sitting on a couch all day.
Yes, because at first I was enrolled in Urban College of Boston, and then I took some time off. And instead of just taking the time off and not doing anything, I enrolled myself into DEF INC., which is a program where you can get certified to sign using American Sign Language. And I've done that over this time period while I'm not in school. And then I'm going to go back in the fall to Urban College of Boston to finish off my certificate program for early child education.
We have room for, but two more questions. So Alex and Leon.
So I was really struck by what Jeremy said about, I think he said 75 different homes in two years you haven't been through. I was reading what the department offers in terms of resources for people who are experiencing high levels of mobility. And are there counseling services? And what does it look like for someone who's experiencing that high level of upheaval mobility? Are they, is there a place, is there a holding place in between homes? Or what are the services in between those homes?
Certainly, we have our foster home placements. I'm not sure what was Jeremy's deal, and you don't necessarily have to tell us. But I'll just finish. So we have other options besides foster home. We have group homes and for children who need more restrictive settings from birth to home show. I'm not, it's at 75 is high.
Yeah, mine's, I've had to switch back and forth because sometimes foster parents wasn't kind of okay with the whole gay thing or they didn't know how, like, they brought it upon and said they didn't know how to react towards it. But there was rest bed homes where I would stay some nights and then I would stay some nights at this place and some nights over here. Then I would go to a place for like two, three weeks, stay there, then I would move somewhere else. Although it was a lot, the only thing that really stayed consistent was my school, which was high school, middle school, which was good because if I didn't stay in school, I would have been kind of everywhere and not really wanted to finish school.
And one of the additional supports is work at ABC comes into play where our mentors are that consistent person. They're not tied to a community. We ideally like to have them within Greater Boston, especially since most of our mentors come from Greater Boston and don't have cars. But what we like to say is that our mentors follow our mentees wherever they go. So if our mentees get moved from here to Fall River or New Hampshire or Worcester, our mentors follow so you have that one person that they know will be there that is their person that can hold those memories. Like, remember your 16th birthday? I went bowling last year. Remember, we went this place? You can show those memories a lot of times. Those are, that's what gets lost in translation when they're getting moved. They lose those memories.
In regards to supportive services, we certainly have therapy and some of those things. But it's sort of where the person is. Sometimes, you know, they're just not interested and you can't make them go to therapy. Sometimes it's just very difficult. That's what I feel.
Yeah, there's been many times where I felt I needed therapy, but I didn't want to go because I didn't want to be looked at a certain way. But over a number of times of talking with my DCF worker, I come to a conclusion that I would take it just so I can have someone to talk to and also get a lot off my chest. It all depends on where the person is and how they feel within going into it. Because I also felt like, oh my God, if I go here and then say someone hears that I went there, how's that going to look? And then on top of that, me being gay, that'll make another issue upon me.
One of the best ways that I think we can avoid that level of disruption and mobility is really by having foster parents that are accepting of the changes that come, particularly with an adolescent's development, but even with, you know, with young children, just being ready for what's coming next. And that really reduces the amount of disruption and mobility.
So I'm really interested in the passive acceptance that Evan started off with and that Jeremy also mentioned in this story about, you know, getting jumped by a foster parent or in the home. So I have a two-part question. It's mainly, I guess, for Michelle and for Jody. What's the agency's response? How does the agency deal with that? And the second question is, what may the agency need to better address these issues when they come up?
I'm talking about the issue of passive acceptance of youth's identity.
I didn't, I apologize for being late and not hearing Jeremy's story. Did I hear you just say that he was jumped? By a foster parent?
No, within the foster home.
And having experiences of violence or having...
So that would probably lead to a 51A of abuse or neglect, a report of abuse or neglect.
Right.
Because it's not acceptable. So our foster homes, our kinship homes, our adoptive homes, they are not exempt from a filing of a report of abuse or neglect. It happens just as it does in the general population. So there would be an investigation around that, a determination. The child may have to leave the home because the determination was supported. So there, you know, there is not supposed to be any tolerance for that. How we're dealing with it now, I can't really speak to the past because this is a new role for me as far as kinship and what the work that I'm doing right now. There is a no discrimination policy within DCF. It carries through to our staff. It carries through to our homes, our foster homes, our adoptive homes. So it's not acceptable.
But also to add that homes are closed over, I mean, if a child can't be kept safe in a home, no other child is safe in that home, you know? So we close homes all the time. And there's an appeal process and they can appeal and we'll take it to a hearing. But, you know, there is a procedure when children are not safe in a foster home. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I was also interested in more of the, like, what might not necessarily constitute abusive, like, non-supportive, I guess, you know, silencing or ignoring youths.
It's okay that you identify this way. Just don't dress like that, that kind of.
Yeah, and certainly that happens. What we're trying to do is, and so although, you know, we have some aging out of foster parents, that's not all bad. You know what I mean? Because it gives us an opportunity to train folks in a different way of thinking and being more accepting. And so what we're trying to do is deal with this in the MAP training and in our ongoing trainings monthly. We, foster parents are required to have, I believe it's 10 hours a year of ongoing training. So if we are sort of setting new expectations, we're hoping that we're weeding out some of this sort of passiveness and destructive behaviors that are occurring. But we, it is often so subtle that, you know, we may have a foster child tell us something to a worker that doesn't sit right with us, but we need to build a case. You know, like, you can't just say, he said, you know, that I look funny in these pants. We get it. We all get what that person is suggesting. But sometimes we can't get to, certainly a home finder will come out and say, please, you know, try to work with that family and I'm suggesting some trainings for you. But there is some weeding out of foster homes that are still ongoing.
Well, and can I just say one thing about that? You know, as Jeremy's talking about how many placements he's been in, there may be a lot of youth that just don't want to move again. And they're not going to tell us that that's happening. And I'm not saying that that puts the onus anywhere else. What I'm saying is, now that the climate is changing, this is building the foundation for our youth to understand we are not accepting of that behavior from a provider, from a caretaker, and the work needs to be done. We, just as we have kids that are afraid to talk about these issues, we have social workers that are afraid to talk about these issues. And that's why the liaisons are now in the offices. Because if that social worker is not able to do that piece, we will get them the education that they need, but in the meantime, the work will still be done by the liaison. So this is where we're trying to build layer upon layer for support and re-education and getting things to where they need to be.
Thank you so much, Jody. I think so the department is really building these layers, building the structure of what they can do to improve the work that is happening with providers and the training that is being offered. But I think it's really incumbent upon us, particularly as the LGBT Youth Commission, but also as LGBT identified adults and allies to step up and fill this deficit and reach out to our friends, reach out to people and talk about what foster care is and really thinking about our own, the youth within our community that really need safe homes. So I want to thank all of our panelists for being here and thank everyone for... We're going to take a five-minute break so if people have specific questions for the panelists, then we're going to reorient a little bit for the rest of the meeting.